Well, it is now seven thirty. I'll call the East Line Board of Selectmen meeting to order today's main seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. If you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We have some business travel and actually some business travel. Mrs. Hardy's up in Maine with her students working and Mr. Daigle is off on a business assignment. So we have four. We have a quorum. Are there any additional agenda items?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, to amend item two G to say, enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel issues slash contract negotiations.
Yeah, that's a good change there. That's a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Great, delegations. Mr. Rando, I'd see you there. Generally, you speak. Would you like to come up?
I'm here.
Great.
Ron Rando, one ninety-four West Wood Grove, East Line. Good evening.
Evening, Ron.
I can say gentlemen, because there's no ladies here tonight. I mean lady on the court, I'm sorry. I got a lot of things to say, but you're probably not going to go, you're not going to listen, because you never have. Every time I've told you something, you've cost the taxpayers more money. My first item is, I think we've got to put the time clocks back in the town hall. I think we have some town employees that might be working part-time. And I would like to see time clocks put back in, back into the town hall to remedy the problem. That's all I'm going to say. I have more, but I'm not going to say anymore about it right now. Now, I'd like to talk about the police chief. I've been doing a lot of calling, a lot of studying about this deal. I think it's going to cost this town a lot more money than you people are telling me. But I think the police chief should be hired under a contract, three years, renewed after three years. Because if he's hired by way how the state hires him, he can't fire him if he does anything wrong. So I think our police chief should be hired by contract, three-year maximum. And also, he just gets his retirement on his base salary, not overtime. Plus, vehicles should not be taken home and used them for private use. Town work only, period. Now, let's see. As Mr. Rando has probably called us stupid and dumb a lot of times by you people, but that's all right. You can't hurt my feelings, because you never did, you never could. My daughter's house burned down May fifteenth, a year ago. May fifteenth, okay? It took them almost a year to get the permit to rebuild it. My grandson, who was living there, got a place to live. He lived up here in the apartments for a while, and the insurance company paid his rent. But as far as I know now, they've canceled it because it's taken too long to get the house up. And like I told you at the meeting the other night, I am talking to people. I am serious about hiring a private detective to do some investigation for me. Because I think, because my name is Rando, my grandsons and grandkids have had a problem in this town, okay? And I've told you that before. So I'm working hard on it. If I can find the right guy, we're going to hire him. And I have a few more. And now I want to talk about things that I have said to this board for years. Number one was the boardwalk. They knew that the railroad was going to change the bridge and the tracks, but they built it anyway. And by the time we have finished, that boardwalk is pretty close school. That is the biggest boondoggle I can imagine. I stood up at that meeting, and I told them when I was there, for the whole meeting, and I said, let's build this thing right. We need to make up air units in there to take care of it. Oh, no, we've got a special coating that's going to go on the ceiling. Well, the outfit to put the coating on the ceiling went bankrupt. And what did that cost us? I don't know what it cost us, but the ceiling got pretty, the steel was pretty rusty from what I understand. And now, we're going to spend, I think, Mr. School Superintendent said at the meeting tonight, over six hundred thousand dollars to do it right. And I told you back then how to do it right, but you didn't listen to me. I put, I think I put in over five hundred swimming pools, give or take a few in my day, working for the gas company. I know what I'm talking about when it comes to swimming pools. And so that cost the taxpayers money. And on the tennis court, I told you, under that tennis court, you had a brook that ran down over the bank, under the tennis court. Oh, no, that's not. You dug it up. What happened? There was a brook under there, a stream. Cost the taxpayers another hundred and nine thousand dollars. So I think we have a problem in this town. And what I'm thinking we've got to do is change our government a little bit. And I think if I'm still alive, come election time, and see what we can do. Because when I ran for the first, for Board of Selectmen, I packed this room here, and they called the fire marshal to want me to cancel it. One of my men, Mr. Kaplan, says, oh, no, we'll go outside in the building out there, whatever you call it. And we had our caucus there. So I don't know if I can do it again, but I'm sure hell going to try. Because I think we've got to change this. Right on, from the top, right on down, apartments downstairs, don't care about the taxpayer, just about the golden goose up there in north end of town. And I'm going to stay till the end. Thank you.
Good. Be happy to answer some of those misstatements.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak? We don't have a public hearing tonight, so this will be the opportunity, the only opportunity until the very end, that you get a chance to speak.
Good evening. How were your gentleman this evening?
Good, good. If you state your name and your address.
Sure. My name is H. Brian Graham. I'm an attorney. I represent the Willards Lawn Property at twenty-eight Shore Road in Niantic. If you want to be, if you want me to be heard on the issue, which I believe is E. on your agenda now, I'd be happy to talk to you now.
Yes.
If you want me to wait till E., I'll wait till E.
Generally, we do it now. This isn't a public hearing tonight. We're just listening to the Public Works Director give us instructions from the, I think there's a Board of Governors over there about traffic.
There are.
So you can speak to that now.
Great, awesome. Thank you. I appreciate you guys hearing me out this evening. So I want to just start by saying that, and I know this is well beyond your jurisdiction, but there was a matter that was before the Board of Governors at Oak Grove, and my clients were made aware of that. So this is the first time, the other day, I believe it was the fifteenth, that they got the mailing regarding the signage. And they happen to own property right across the street from where the signage is going to go, and they were never made aware by Oak Grove. I know that is well beyond your jurisdiction.
Right.
But I want to make you gentlemen aware of that. So pardon the presentation. It wouldn't, it's not as polished as I would like, because we were just made aware of it the other day. The Oak Grove did make some points as it relates to this specific signage, which I want to, which I believe is in your packet. It's an email from Jim Weaver, who happens to be the president, to Joe, who is the Public Works Director. He says that the board has approved these no parking signs for five reasons. Number one, it would make it safer for pedestrians walking on Shore Road between the right-of-way steps and the beach without cars parked on the side of the road. What I will tell you is that there are passways or walkways, right-of-ways, that are through the private property that access the beach. And it's, it would be very feasible for these pedestrians. And what they should be doing is walking down the steps, through the right-of-way that goes in between some of the homes, to the beach, and then walk down to the public beach. They're utilizing the road, I understand that. But that is, there are right-of-ways for them to, for them to take. It talks about that there being a lot of no parking signs on Shore Road. By my count, there are two at present. One is in front of a fire hydrant. A little redundant. We all know we can't park in front of a fire hydrant. And the second one is at the, is at the yacht club. So there's no other parking, no parking signs. So there's about four hundred yards of Shore Road. This encompasses about ninety feet of the pedestrian problem. I think that these are, these sign, these specific signs may be asked for a different purpose than just pedestrian, pedestrian issues. It would eliminate the parking of cars by non-members for the use of the beach. There are, to my client's knowledge, this doesn't happen. As a matter of fact, to use the beach, you have to have a Oak Grove tag. And if you don't have one of the Oak Grove tags, the security members, security team, who's been hired to remove people that don't have these wristbands, are removed. So even if they did park there, they can utilize the beach, because they're not allowed to. They make a point that it would be safer for the people on the western side to back out of their driveways. My clients, like I said, are directly across where these no parking signs would go. They would both tell you, or all three of them that are here this evening would tell you. But they've never had an issue backing out of the driveway whatsoever. So I don't really think that carries too much weight. The part that it would be legal for the removal of cars, well, of course, if there's no parking signs, we understand that it would be legal for the police to remove, to remove the signs. What I would ask the board to do, rather than approve what has been sought here, is by way of compromise, there is a, there is a bend, which I, which I think Joe's going to talk to you about. There is a bend in the road that the no parking sign, the southernmost parking, no parking sign that's proposed, be moved up between forty and fifty feet to stop at where the bend ends. The straightaway is a clear line of sight, wouldn't be any issues with pedestrians, wouldn't be any issues with backing out of driveways. So I think by way of compromise, that would be a good compromise. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Not this time. We will just hear from you tonight. We can't do a question.
Very well. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you. Sure. Is there anyone else like to speak on this? Sure. It's a name and address situation when you get up there.
I'm Trevalli, and I'm at twenty-nine Shore Road.
Why don't you pull the mic down? There you go.
I could scream. I am in favor of the signs. Matter of fact, I probably initiated it. I sit, my house sits up on a little cliff, and I watch the pedestrian traffic all summer long, go down that staircase. And when, not all the time, but when there are cars double parked on both sides of the road, which happens a lot, the people have no ability to do anything except they walk down the middle of the road. Since I've been there for two years, I've never seen anyone cut through one of the paths between the homes, because you couldn't get to a beach from the paths between the homes, because there's rocks. You'd have to climb up over rocks. People travel the stairway that belonged to Oak Grove to get to the beach area that we have access to with a nice little boardwalk. Unfortunately, when they come off the staircase, it's a bend going up a hill. There's, when there's double parking, parking on my side and parking on the other side, which there isn't that much parking on the other side, but there's people's driveways right there. There isn't a room for another vehicle to come up over the crest of that hill. And people don't pay as much of attention as they used to with their cell phones and their texting and everything. And it's an accident waiting to happen. I have a video on my phone, just as a little example of all the traffic, just in a two-minute timeframe, one weekend. And I don't know if you're interested in seeing it, but I do have it. But even if you're pushing one of the stop signs back, it's still on a curve. If you can look at the map, you can see that it's a full curve. And if there are cars parked there at the end of the pedestrian stairway, they would have to go around, still go into the street to walk. They're still approaching that curve, and it's creating blind areas. And I, there's baby carriages and bikes, and people walk in, there are dogs, they're not paying attention. So I am totally in favor of that, those signs being where they're designated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak on the subject? Anyone else? Anyone else? We'll move on then. Approval of the minutes, the public hearing.
Move to approve the minutes of the public hearing of April fifth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion is second. Any corrections or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Next.
Move approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for April fifth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
And second. Any corrections and comments? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? And lastly.
Finally, move approval of the minutes of the public hearing on April nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
It's been seconded. Comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. We'll move into the new business part of our agenda this tonight. This is the annual lease agreement that the town enters with the Niantic Lions Club for their big feast, their lobster feast and art show that occurs over the Fourth of July weekend. This, this year will actually be Friday, the thirtieth of June, and I didn't know this till now, till Sunday, the second, because that darn holiday is falling on a Tuesday. So with, with no changes to prior agreements, I'd look for a motion.
Move to authorize the first selectman to enter into a lease agreement with the Niantic Lions Club, and authorize the first selectman to enter into a lease agreement with the Niantic Lions Club for the purpose of selling food in connection with the art show on July one and two, two thousand and seventeen. The town grants to the Lions for the period of four PM on Friday, June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, through ten PM on Sunday, July second, two thousand and seventeen, the right to use the land at the Town Hall on Pennsylvania Avenue, which is to be set aside for that purpose by the town.
I'm second.
It's been seconded. Any comments? It's a great event. Looking forward to it. And we thank the Lions for all they do. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. Mr. Newton and Dr. Haggen here tonight. Do you need to, I know you're observing what we're doing. Is there any presentation you need to make or explanation to the board?
One, one please.
Okay.
And I apologize.
No need.
Because with respect to the action, all the, the actions that are needed by the Board of Selectmen to allow us to make the submission of the elementary school projects to the state of Connecticut to trigger the reimbursement assessment, the, obviously the authorization of going forward with it is one that you have on your, on your agenda. The other one has to do with establishing a building committee. And I see that there is a proposed resolution that's been drafted. And I apologize that what we have done is that the Board of Ed, in conjunction with Ray O'Connor, have adopted and recommended a charter for the proposed building committee that would oversee the project. And that building committee is to be comprised of the town building committee and two representatives from the Board of Education, with the fact that with, also with representatives of the three principals and the superintendent from the school district. The two Board of Ed members would be voting members. The superintendent and the three principals would not be voting members on the, on the committee. And in the charter, which apparently you have not gotten, have you got?
I know the charter well on this subject.
Okay.
It speaks to only the building committee, the town building committee. Well, there was a middle school building committee that was different, but please tell me what you want to tell me.
Have you seen the charter that the Board of Ed adopted?
No, just our charter of our town.
No, we have not.
That's, that's what I apologize for. That's what's not, you do not have. So under the state statutes, a building committee has to be established. It can be the town building committee. It can be an independent building committee. It can be anything. It cannot be the Board of Ed, okay? The Board of Ed cannot establish it.
Correct.
But in discussions that we had with Ray O'Connor, he very much, as the Chair of the Town Building Committee, said that he would, would like to have at least two Board members, Board of Ed members, on the committee with the Town Building Committee. And then we had discussions. So we put, we put together a charter for the, for the committee, which then also outlined all of the things that need to be done by the building committee, very similar to what, what is written in this. But it also talks about what happens when there are change control, change, changes that are, that occur, and the process for how change controls are handled by the Dollar Mount. So you obviously haven't seen that. So I apologize that we haven't gotten that to you. So, and that was in fact what was, was acted on by the Board of Ed. So we're a little bit, I think we're a little, we're, we've kind of dropped the ball, I think, in the, in the transfer of that information to you folks for your review. I mean, obviously.
There's, and I spoke to the attorney this week on this, that there is, in our charter, it speaks to the town building committee.
Yeah.
And in the past, it was the adoption of a middle school town building committee, which comprises some other people. And in the past, it was a, and something else. But until we change the ordinance in the book, or the rule of the book, it's the town building committee. So we may have to go back into a charter issue or an ordinance.
Oh, I see.
Issue to change the makeup of the town building committee, because that's by charter. I'll tell you now, it's defined as the town building committee. We can change the town building committee makeup later.
Yeah.
You know, but we probably, and I'm not the lawyer, and Lawrence is here tonight.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm just saying, yeah.
But we've gone, we've gone over this with him. I think we're going to need to do a little bit more work on the charter side, maybe an ordinance, establishing the fact that for this period of time, for this specific project, the town building committee shall consist of, and name it in our town charter, not just your rules charter, but the town's charter. Do you see something different? Are you going to say?
No, I think you said the town charter supersedes.
Everything.
The Board of Ed charter.
Everything.
What we're trying to.
Yeah. So we've got to make sure the orange book, the town charter, is lines up with what you want it to line up with.
Okay.
Which is adding people on to the town committee.
Yeah.
And I applaud you with that. I mean, we should get that instant feedback with people from the Board of Ed on that committee, so it gets done right one time. So I'll, we can work, I think, I think the resolution can stand as East Line Town Building Committee.
Okay.
We can redefine what that is.
Okay.
Later by ordinance in the charter.
Okay.
Since they're not really doing the work yet.
Okay, all right, okay, fair enough. Yeah. So that would, that will work in terms of the, the kind of, for the submission.
Yes.
And if we need to come back and go to bring any adjustment, we can always do that.
Yes. And I'll work with you on that ASAP.
Okay, okay. So apologize for the little bit of a, a little bit of a hiccup, but. Okay. I think that was, that was it.
So we have three resolutions. It can be read once or referred to.
I think we can read them once.
Once, okay.
Yeah. And then, and then just to the following school facilities, and then site two and three.
Site, okay.
Okay. Resolve that the East Line Board of Selectmen authorizes the East Line Board of Education to apply to the Connecticut Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject grants for alterations and upgrades at the following school facilities. Niantic Center School, general renovations and alterations to the building structure that includes indoor air quality, ADA compliance, improved building security, interior building finishes, electrical, lighting and technology upgrades, and specific site and structural work to include exterior masonry, restorations, entire building window replacement, and replacement of one boiler. In addition, but not limited to, a new gym floor, wall pads below the stage, portable handicap lift to the stage, and one stair incline platform lift will be included. Lily B. Haynes School, general renovations and alterations to the building structure that includes indoor air quality, ADA compliance, improved building security, interior building finishes, electrical, lighting and technology upgrades. Specific site and structural work will include, but is not limited to, a reconfiguration at the front of the building for a new bus apparent drop-off, repaving of parking areas, replacing the onsite sanitary line and adding a lining to the waste lines, replacing one boiler, replacing corridor lockers with new lockers, reestablishing the second gym, and building out old locker rooms to usable classroom space. Flanders Elementary School, general renovations and alterations to the building structure that includes indoor air quality, ADA compliance, improved building security, interior building finishes, electrical, lighting and technology upgrades, and specific site and structural work. This will include, but is not limited to, the replacement of the entire building's roof, expansion of the main office area, replacement of corridor wall partitions in the third and fourth grade wings, replacement of window blinds in the cafeteria, and replacement of wall pads in the gym. Two, resolve that the East Line Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for alterations and upgrades at the school facilities outlined above. And three, resolve that the East Line Town Building Committee shall act as the building committee with regard to alterations and upgrades at the school facilities outlined above.
Second.
There are three resolutions there. Okay? So there are three separate resolutions. You read them as one, and we can read them as one, and you can second them as one. I want to acknowledge for the record that we are voting on three resolutions. Okay? Resolve that the East Line Board of Selectmen authorizes Board of Ed to apply for the Connecticut Commissioner of Education and to accept or reject grants for the alterations and upgrades to the following school facilities. Resolve that the East Line Building Committee shall act as a building committee with regard to alter, alterations, and that the East Line Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for alterations, upgrades for the following school facilities. There are three. That was your motion.
Second.
There was a second for all three. Are there any other comments? Just make sure we're clear on the record on that, so you don't get in trouble.
So right now, it's the East Line Town Building Committee. Anything that we're talking about tonight.
As it stands, the building committee is as it is. We can go back and change that.
Correct.
And I noticed that the other day, too.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? For clarification, can I ask one question? Obviously, with the state budget issues, and questionable whether things will even get bonded, whether if this doesn't get approved, our, our big thirty-seven million dollar school plan, although we've gotten all the checkmarks, and we've already gotten the preliminary, the plan would obviously be to pull back and wait, or wait for confirmation, or, or have we? Because that question has come up already, already with the state.
That's a possibility. It's getting on that priority one listing is the goal. If we can get on that priority, priority one listing, then as we know it, our projects will move forward as other towns that are on that listing as well.
Okay.
So I think we've got, due to the scope of the work that is getting done, we've got a good shot from what we've, we've gathered of making sure we get on that priority one listing.
Great.
So we'll be working with the state on, on that, with the grants division.
Okay, good, good, good. And that's, that's obviously going to come up with conversations about the state.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you very much. So thank you, gentlemen. So there's, and on our agenda next is discussion of possible townwide smoking policy. I don't have Kathy Wilson here tonight, who kind of I don't have Kathy Wilson here tonight, who kind of instigated this. This isn't something that the Council on Aging Board can adopt on its own, just maybe within their area. They have an issue with people smoking right outside the door, they have people on oxygen, they have people standing outside the door when the windows are open and smoke is getting in, and for some of the, our seniors, that's an issue, it's become an issue. And they're asking that, that we adopt and maybe endorse the prohibition of tobacco use at the East Line Community Center, not townwide, the agenda's a little off on that, but East Line Community Center, that they, as you can see, there's a 25-foot zone for proper disposal and lighting cigarettes, and they'd like us to consider that for the community center area. Not all town buildings, not all town areas, just here. This was in your packs, I don't know if you want to have a discussion on this tonight, if you feel comfortable with this and endorsing this. The Council on Aging has been working on this for a little while, as you can see, a little work went into this, and it is, it's become an issue, or they wouldn't have brought it to our attention up in that area.
You know, I think if we just, are people, my guess is people are probably just going outside to smoke, and I don't know if there's possibly an intention to cause.
Standing right under the portico.
Exactly.
Right next to the windows.
Maybe have a sign posted, and at some point, I might not know if you have to take any action, no smoking within X amount of feet of the building. Then they know, especially if we're from the handicap spots where, by the senior center or leaning into the building, if you have to, if you're on oxygen, you're walking, or you have COPD and not on oxygen, you're walking by someone that's smoking, it could cause a problem.
It's been an issue.
And it is becoming an issue. So, I think there has to be some type of a buffer zone to make sure that, in the area where people would be parking and having to walk through there, and if you're under the portico, you open and close the door and it's wind that gets sucked right into the building.
That's an issue.
And I'm sure that's an issue, too. So, I'd have no problem, you know, letting, you know.
They also try to open the front windows, they get a nice, they try not to put the air conditioning on until they need to. You know, we see short time, we get nasty breezes, but they can't, because people sit on the front benches and smoke. I'm the last person that's trying to get more government involvement on things like this. I don't like to see this kind of stuff, but when I also hear that it's an issue, and they're having trouble just asking people to move, because then it becomes, people don't. So.
I would think posting a sign near the entrance to the seniors.
Yeah, or having a rule to refer to.
Yeah, a rule that says no parking, no parking, no.
No smoking.
No smoking within X amount of feet of the thing, or unless in designated areas, and then cite where that designated area would be.
Other comments?
We're not, this is not an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, it's a rule of the building.
It's a rule of the building, and they're asking for us to approve a policy on the rule of the building.
Rule of the building.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Which ultimately lands with us.
Yeah.
Do we have any similar rules for other buildings?
Well, we have rules not to smoke in the public parks, that might be an ordinance, or it might be a rule of the parks and rec. We have an ordinance to fine, but it's their rule not to smoke on the beach, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's on the beach. I don't know if it's in their park.
And I think it's their rule, and we enforce it with an ordinance of the fines, but not necessarily the rule.
Yep.
You remember, it's their, it's their.
Their rule.
It's their rules. But I don't know of any others, frankly.
This is a problem anywhere else, or is it just the community center? I mean, the schools probably have their own.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, you're not allowed to smoke.
They have a smoke for the campus.
There's a statute that says you can't smoke anywhere on school property, period.
Correct.
But that doesn't apply to.
Who holds that rule? Is that on the Board of Ed or the town owns the building?
It's a state statute.
So, state covers us on that?
State, right. Any comments, Mr. Cunningham? What are your thoughts?
Not a moment.
Okay.
You never know.
Want to dig in a little bit more and push this to our next meeting, where we can ask some questions, go up there and observe? I would like that, it's not supposed to start until July 1st anyway, so we have another meeting.
Well, the thing that's kind of new.
We have several meetings.
The thing that's kind of new and unique, as I read this, is the e-cigarettes. Along with, we already know the tobacco, and I understand exactly their place, and I have no problem with that. And I don't necessarily have a problem with the e-cigarettes, it's just a new, it's kind of a new thing. Which we probably don't have a regulation on the beaches for that, the e-cigarettes.
No. Yeah, this is, we're going to keep this just to the community center tonight, and let the parks and rec control their beaches and their parks.
I'll be up there Friday, I could take a look around and talk to Kathy about it.
Ask her about it.
A little bit, and then ask Kathy to come back, we'll work out some type of verbiage for a policy to adopt at the next meeting, something.
The next meeting's the beginning of June, they'll leave plenty of time to post the notice and all that, so we could wait till the next meeting, if it's your pleasure. It's your pleasure?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I do have a question.
Yes.
Just to clarify, so, you know, the discussion item is a townwide policy, but it looks like they're just asking for a very limited policy for that building, so.
Yes, as I.
Did I describe aptly, is it really a townwide policy that we're?
It's not a townwide policy.
Right.
Well, it's Kathy asking if we want one or not, but this specific request was for the community center. The rules are written up for the community center, we could always adopt this later for other buildings in town.
Yeah, if we're not having problems with building, I don't, I think we could, you know, if we have to adopt more policies later on, fine, but I don't think there's any problem here at Town Hall, or I haven't heard of any problems anywhere else.
I have any complaints.
Any complaints?
So, that's probably, that's probably overkill, the townwide policy. And I guess the question is, who has control of that building? Who has the authority to regulate the policies of the building itself?
Well, a good question, right?
And we don't know.
The, so the Commissioner on Aging did a whole lot of work on this, and is trying to adopt it, but they don't really control the building, we do, and that's why it's coming to us.
Yeah.
So, they're making this suggestion and this plea for our adaptation, adoption of this, but you're right, it's a town building. She has done the work with all the other department heads in that building, so Dave, Mike, registrars, the library, and they all concur.
So, I think it makes sense to table this, so we can think through the best way to.
Ask some questions.
Probably the proposal for the next meeting. And there's one last question, who is the enforcement of that? Is it, is it the police?
Well, the enforcement.
You know, I think in most cases, if you ask, you know, some, can you please move? That's not going to be a problem. If it becomes a problem, you could always contact, you know, Kathy could talk to the police department, see how they'd like to handle it as well.
Right now, it's not an ordinance, so it's not a police matter.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right, it's not a fine, it's not a police matter. We don't, I'm trying not to escalate this, I'm trying to just make it a rule that people will just agree to.
Yep.
And we have a rule to point to, and maybe a designated area that people can go to. We wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't an issue with some of the seniors that do frequent the building, which is a lot, I mean, it's a very.
Yeah, it's very understandable. I mean, you have people on oxygen and that are compromised, breathing situations, and I can see where this would be very objectionable to them. The question is, how do we do it in a way that isn't overbearing?
And the other issue is the longer portico going to the library area, where people, on a rainy day legitimately, would want to hang out there and smoke, and the children's museum, you know, flow is pretty, pretty heavy in the afternoon, all day long, so, children's library, museum. So, okay, we'll table this for another day. Discussion of possible action on the Public Works request to put no parking signs, no Grove. We heard some testimony, appreciate that. We, I will allow the.
Wait, you jump, you skip the Powerhouse account.
I always skip.
Yep.
So, we can do this. So, we'll get back to that.
Well, I'll do it real quick, then. Move to approve an expenditure of $1,535 from the Powerhouse account to supplement the purchase of the new senior center vehicle that is being procured through the Department of Transportation 5310 grant process.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It's a four zero. We'll open that next discussion up. Joe, you heard some testimony, I was going to say, I allow the Selectmen to ask any questions necessary to form an opinion from people that have given testimony as well, it might be experts in the neighborhood, and of course, one would be Joe, our Public Works Director. Mr. Braga.
Yeah, for the record, I'm the Director of Public Works. So, just, one of the things that comes across our office is people have parking, you know, they want to restrict parking in front of their house with things going on. The reason I bring that up is that I don't feel it's the Public Works Directors or sort of that, the town is designated, the Board of Selectmen is a legal traffic authority. When you're going to restrict parking in town, the best way to do it is through the legal traffic authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, on the legal traffic authority representative, so that's why we're here today, and it gives people a public process, just so we know why we're here. So, with that being said, I did get a complaint about a concern for, to restrict some parking because of a safety issue. This happened last fall, the person that actually.
Can you roll the tape, please?
The person that actually brought it up was Patty Travellia at 29 Shore Road, who has spoken tonight, is here. So, when that happened, I went out there in the best nature to try to find out and come up with a proposal to correct the solution, because before we bring it in front of the board, I sent a letter to all the neighbors there of a possible solution to limit parking, but I thought it was a good process, because everyone didn't want it, and I got all the letters and the feedback, so I didn't have to bring it in front of this board. And at that point, this was last September, September 2016, I kicked the matter back to the Oak Grove Beach Association. I talked to the President, and I talked to some members, and I basically said, you have a concerned resident, you have some issues with parking down there. I says, I'd like you guys to address it at your board meeting, and if you have any recommendations for the town of what you would like to see as a beach association, you can, they're not the governing board by any stretch of imagination, but they, that's their, their charge is their residence. So, they did take it up at their meeting, I believe it was a September meeting, I did, and they came, they had Mrs. Travellia at a meeting, and they came up with a recommendation of what they were looking for. It was different from the one. So, this was like October, that's that, what's written up by Mr. Weaver, the President of the Oak Grove Beach Association, is in your packet. It's October, November, there's not really parking issues in the beach areas in the winter, so now we're, now we're here in front of you. So, just kind of where we're at with that is, and some of the things that I'll kind of reiterate in the, in the, in the letter, in the email from, from the President of Oak Grove, is, it does appear that there, so, I was trying to sift through, based on the recommendation from Oak Grove Beach Association President, I was trying to then take that, see if that's something that would work, and so, we came up with a restriction of, or no parking within these signs on the west side of the road, which is the non-water side of the road, and the reason being is to try, because there is a right of way that people come across, come through from the backside, like man wearing, they come through, and as the attorney that spoke before, people are supposed to cut through, there's a right of way to the beach, not a lot of them do, they go down the, down the road. What we tried to identify in the area, the no parking designation, was an area that if people are parking on the edge of the road, on the inside of a curve, that it kind of only leads people to walk in, down the middle of the road in a curve as a car is coming around in the summer, and so, it seems to be a safety issue. They identified the five reasons that they feel, I know the attorney that spoke before, delegations that spoke it. What I'm looking at as a legal traffic authority rep and saying to this board is, we're trying as best we can to make it as safe as possible in that neighborhood with a recommendation from the Oak Grove Beach Association. So, I'd be, if you are willing to take comment, or however that works, I mean, if it does, moving the signage on the south end up, a little bit in the straightaway is something that works better with the neighbors, so it doesn't restrict parking, but makes, still makes it safer than it is, is something that I think we could look at. The other thing is that I don't think anyone disputes, when I say the north and the south, that the north end, I don't believe anyone disputes putting a no parking sign on the north side, it's how far down on the south side, because, you know, every 22 feet, you restrict, you restrict a parallel parking spot. So, you know, we could put the no parking sign on the north side, move it up from the recommendation about 40 feet, which would be about two spots to the north as a suggestion, put that sign in, and then kick it back to the Oak Grove Beach Association to monitor and tell us, let them have, you know, advertise it at their meeting to, that they can discuss it, and if they'd like to see it moved even farther down, it's not a big deal for the highways department to pick that sign up and move that down, it'll be the same side. I think that might be the best way to try to address a safety issue without, you know, sweeping it under rug, but also to go the whole length is something that does limit the parking of the people down there, which in beach associations, there's not a lot of. And just the one last comment is that this only addressed about 160 feet. The only reason we're talking about this area is a lot of times in beach areas, and especially on Shore Road, you can't park a car on the side of the road, because there's landscaping, and there's other items on the edge of the road. The thing that's actually fortunate about this area, there's a lot of area on the edge of the road, so it gives a perception that you could use that all for parking, but there's private property, and then there's a curve there, so we're trying, we're trying to meet all goals. So, that's all I have to say. I know there's kind of a point and counterpoint with neighbors here, however the thing, but as a legal traffic authority, you know, we are coming up on the summer, we could do as I recommend, as in putting, putting it to the north end, moving up about 40, 50 feet on the south side, or, or the commission could vote on the current proposal, or we could just kick it back to the beach association for their recommendation, though that's where I stand with this right now.
Well, thank you, Joe, for the update, and I think you were trying to find a compromise on this, but frankly, we don't want to get into the neighborhood, in my opinion, there's four up here. We're getting a recommendation from the Oak Grove Board of Directors.
Correct.
Who know their neighborhood and think, I would think are working in representing everyone and trying to make decisions based on everyone's behalf in their neighborhood, that's why they're there. Yes, with the traffic authority. I do see, I think you've well documented the curve and the road and the issues, and I think they have, too. You're trying to find a compromise, but maybe giving a couple spaces back, especially in a crowded beach community. I wonder if we should kick this back to the Oak Grove Board of Directors, based on your amended proposal, which is move the sign down and create some parking in the straightaway.
My only concern is that if it's identified as a safety reason, and it's a curve, and we kick it back to them to just move it up a little bit, then if anything ever happens on that curve in the summertime, because the problem is with beach associations, is I live in one, is, you know, when's the next meeting? You know, it could be in June, and then it gets back to here in July.
Right.
And all of a sudden, something happens. But what I talked about, it doesn't appear to be, from what I understand, any disagreement about the sign on the northerly side. If you go to the minimum distance on the southerly side, you could always kick it back to the Oak Grove Beach Association to extend it even farther, but then you address the curve issue, so that no one gets whacked on the curve, walking down the middle of the road, because you can't see around. That's just my thought, is, because if we do kick it back and do nothing, then we now kind of have a safety concern that we didn't address right in the middle of summer.
Right, those are to the traffic authority's attention.
And all we're trying to do is, is balance the safety, more importantly, but the fact of it is limited parking down there. That's just my recommendation, is that this board does move to approve, I do have a, I mean, a motion, but, but based on the revised recommendation of moving it up about 40 feet to a point that we, you can get around the curve with seeing around it, and then that straightaway, and then kick it to the Board of Governors, I can kick it, I can work with the Board of Governors to see if it needs to be extended. That's where I would recommend.
Okay, that's based on your expert, sorry, I shouldn't put those words in your mouth, but your, your authority and your expertise.
Addressing the safety concern while also understanding the sensitivity of limiting parking in any area, especially a beach area.
Okay.
Couple of questions. I understand the concerns, are we disadvantaging any people or properties by doing this?
Depends who you talk to. Depends who you talk to. I mean, if we go with the full length, then it limits the parking in that area, and one of the areas that people would be, I believe, are, are here tonight. And, and that's why, before the meeting, I suggested they talk under delegations to have an opportunity to say something. So, yes, to answer your question, it would be limiting the parking, the parking, but we're always going to err on the side of safety over parking, however, this is a rec, this is a kind of a, some kind of a work, a kind of a compromise, as even the attorney suggested, that you, you limit the parking on, anytime you have an inside curve, you don't like, you don't like parking on an inside curve, because you can't see around it. And if you have someone, God forbid, it's walking a stroller in the middle of the road, and someone's coming from the north to the south over that hill and coming around the corner, if you don't have, if you don't limit the parking there, and someone's parked, as Mrs. Travellia said, on both sides of the road, and someone has nowhere to go, that's why the, I would support some limitation of parking there.
Do you know who, who's parking there, or are they visitors, or are they owners?
I'm assuming they're, I don't live there, I'm assuming they're guests of the people, because it's not, this is not a, you know-
So, it's not an everyday occurrence, people are parking there?
They were correct, people aren't, people from out of town are coming to Oak Grove to park there. That's, this is, this is, this is the residents or their, or their, their guests.
Yes, I'm just wondering if it's used regularly, or if it's, this is like a peak time, this is a problem?
Well, from, from mid-June to, to, it's the summer season, probably more weekends, but it's, it's, it's the life of a beach association, that's what happens down there. They, they come down there, people visit, they have people, they have the right to have people down there, but it's limited parking. And in this case, we're just trying to make sure it's, it's safe as possible for the people walking, but also not limiting someone's opportunity to have their guests park.
Can they park in front of the stairs? I see where you want to put your signs, that's no parking too, so-
That's, yeah.
So, that really clears out the whole area. Okay. Are there any homes there that don't have parking access at the properties?
Like driveways?
Like, yeah, are there, are there homes down there? I'm looking at the Google map-
There's not a lot of places to park down there, because, I mean, your most-
But it looks like every house has a parking space. Every yard has a place to park.
Well, someone parks on the, on the water side of Shore Road, there's no specific designation that they can't park there. The problem is, there's more driveways on the shore side-
Yeah, I see that.
...than on the wa, on the, on the landward side, just because that's where the houses are. So, you're not allowed to park in front of someone's driveway-
Of course.
Nor, you don't want to have someone park two feet off the edge of it, so, but it is more ideal for them to park on the shore side, because then, if anyone's coming, the sightline is perfectly clear around the inside of the curve of a non-calling car.
There was one house on the westerly side, looks like it's a small, small lot, does that have a driveway?
That-
That's right.
The, the, the little box?
Yeah.
That's actually Mrs. Travellia's lot. That's, that's on two elevations. She lives up on a hill, and that's on the bottom of the hill.
But there's no house there?
There's no-
It's a printout, isn't it, come on, it's not good?
No. But that, that is her, her property, and there's no, yeah, there's no structure on
Yeah, I, it does concern me very much with the curve there, because here again, someone, especially if there's a lot of traffic, there's enough distractions of people driving right now, and if there's someone in the road or something like that, I mean, even if they're not supposed to be there, you don't want to see something bad happen for any reason at all. Now, Joe, you had, you said you have something now that would be a little different from the proposal we have right now?
Yeah. So, what my suggestion is, based on talking to one of the parties, is, I mean, because there is a big concern of loss of parking, is on this map, the aerial map that you have-
When I say that, when I say that the north, the north way is, is this, is this, is this sign? Is bringing this sign, because it looks like the road is somewhat straight there, it starts going into a curve a little farther down. The whole, this map is a one inch equals 60 feet-
Right.
So, the whole length of this looks at about 150 feet, give or take, maybe a little less than that. So, if you go up to the north about 40 feet, you're, you're still in the straightaway, 40 feet, 45 feet or so, is two cars, is two park, parking spots-
Yeah.
...because a parking spot is 20 feet-
22 feet.
And so, you could put back two parking spots, but you're still not at the, the curvature there. So, then the rest of the area, which is about 80 or 90 feet, would be in, in the curve, would-
So, you're losing, you're losing about four parking spots, according to the revised plan?
As, yes.
Okay.
So, I, I have a, the picture we have, is this the revised plan?
No, it's, it's not, because the process is, when I sent this out, I sent a letter to the, everyone on Shore Road, from South Drive all the way to Man Waring, and I told them that this meeting was happening tonight, and this came about in talking to the residents tonight, that there was very much of a concern of loss of parking. But I read it is that they, they understand, they understand the fact of the north parking sign, and they understand the safety as far as the curve, it's just that there appears to be an area that's a straightaway there, and if they could get back a little bit of the parking there, which, you know, in a beach area, you need all you can get, would be the kind of the resolution. Now, I, I can't emphasize enough that, once you sink that sign in the south end, at least we've covered our safety issue, and we could kick, as I say, kick it back to the board, so they could have their full public process of discussing it, of if it needs to be extended farther to the south for safety reasons. But as far as I'm concerned, as a Public Works Director, we've addressed the major concern of being on a curve. And, and then we could get a deferent recommendation if the, if the Board of Governors happens, the Oak Grove Beach Association Board of Governors happens to weigh in on that, but at least we can have some signage up there to protect the obvious interests that no one disagrees with, is that there is a concern as you come around that curve, that you can't see someone walking in the middle of the road, because there's no sidewalks down there.
So, is your proposal, two signs?
My proposal is to, is, is a parking area, the northerly thing is designated exactly where it is there, it's going to be just as, just as south of Mrs. Travellia's driveway-
Yeah.
And then the southerly line, instead of being by the right-of-way, is, is pull it up about 40 feet, just before, just before the curve. And then I would kick it to the Oak Grove Beach Association to discuss if they would, if they would recommend it extended, and they could invite all their neighbors to discuss it in the format that a beach association does it. And if they want to make a recommendation to us to then go all the way back to the, to the right-of-way, then, then they can do that, and then in time, then if, so be it, we, we could, we could kick it down another 40 feet. I don't even think at that point is, I mean, my own opinion, I think as a legal traffic rep, I could, we could move it down, but this board is already, the whole purpose is, is to give the public the opportunity, as you as a legal traffic authority, to speak their piece. Well, they've already had a chance to speak their piece, and they will be able to talk to the Oak Grove Beach Association before, and to see what that recommendation is. That's-
But, and Joe, you're recommending, based on your position and your training, expertise, and the fail, that something needs to be done, and you've come up with something that you feel would satisfy that right now, with your amended-
That, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all right. I'm comfortable with that.
I'm okay with the amended one. If we're going to do any more, then I want to get down there and see that, but I know that area a little bit. But could we get more of a definition, if you're asking us to prove something tonight? What?
Well, you said you have an am, you have a motion for us, right?
Well, I have, yeah, I have a motion.
Because we have one as well, but we can always amend that.
This is, this is what I put together. I didn't make the change, but I can, um-
So, does, your amendment effectively looks like remove six, three spaces?
Yeah.
Two.
Two.
To remove three? Looks like it's going to remove, looks like about 60 feet.
The amendment is to, is to move the southerly sign up about approximately 45 feet from as proposed.
Almost to that line of the other, that square property?
Give or, give or take, wherever, 45 feet, because that's two more parking spaces, and, and to make sure it's before the, before the curve.
Is that too far north? Was that just too far north? People come down the stairs, then they take a left to get to the beach access. So, they are walking on the road, and we're trying to keep them off the road, especially as they're approaching the corner.
The only, the only thing is-
So, they got to go outside of the cars, to know, and by, by the time people are coming up and around the turn, they're slamming the brakes, if they're not paying attention, and they're catching people in the road. And that, that was the testimony I heard. That's my concern, trying to find a compromise, and, but, but throwing two cars on the side of the road, and people are coming down the hill from the stairs, I would imagine it's not just one or two families that come down the hill, and then it looks like the access is back up north. And if they have to do that, they have to get into the road around cars, and then back off into the shoulder.
Correct. Except that when someone's coming around that corner, they're going to have much better sightline, because when you come around, when you come from the north to south, you're actually coming on a hill, and you're coming around, you'll be able to see those people better.
I'm not seeing that. You're going to move, you're going to move, you're going to move this sign, this sign down here.
Someone comes from the north here, is higher up, and they're coming around, and someone comes right here-
Oh, I see, well-
They're going to have better sight, and this is a straightaway.
If it's a sedan and not a big Tahoe, the kids hide behind.
The other thing the board can do is to go as recommended, or recommended, and-
And they had-
-have the whole thing, and then, and then reassess it later. I just want to address the safety concern.
Joe, would you, it looks like there's area for the cars to pull off the road a little bit, and it's on town property. Would you, would we rather have the cars doing that, or would you rather have the cars closer to the street and-
I'd rather have them off the road.
So, you'd rather have them off the road, which then takes away that right-of-way for walking, right?
Yes.
So, my question is, you would rather have them off the road onto there than put them on the road and put, put markers-
We don't have sidewalks.
...so people can walk on the other side of these cars?
We don't have sidewalks, so you can't really-
I know we don't have sidewalks, but you-
It's not our land.
No, not, the town owns quite a bit of that.
The town owns about, well, at the right-of-way, the town owns probably about five, six feet, and then it opens up probably to about 15.
Right, but if we put reflectors or something, so that maintain three feet from the property line, so people could walk, would that alleviate some of this, and ensure people, people can walk between the cars and the hill?
If we start getting into that degree-
Yeah.
...I would kick it to the Oak Grove Beach Association to recommend, that's their neighborhood, that's where these people live-
They can pay for it.
Then, because I don't know if you can really direct people in that manner, and they would follow that. I just want to, so people aren't coming out in the road and walking down the middle of the road, and you can't see them coming around the curve.
We're satisfying, in your opinion, the safety issue if we move the signs back up north 40 feet, give the, give the two spaces there, and see how that looks, and how that is, and how the Oak Grove Be, uh-
And then kick it to Oak Grove.
And then if there's more of a safety issue-
Then move it all the way to that-
Then we'll move it back at a later time. Because it's all about safety by this authority.
Correct.
Yeah. And they, they might have other issues.
Okay. I'll make a motion, move to approve the installation of two no parking signs on the west side of Shore Road in Oak Grove Beach Association, as proposed by Public Works Director at the May 17, 2017 Board of Selectment Meeting, and for the reasons identified in the President of Oak Grove Beach Association's email dated October 12, 2016, which is included in the supporting documentation. So, that would be, obviously, would Joe's proposal tonight, and-
Yeah. Is there a second?
My question, is that the amended, or is that what's being proposed?
That's what I'm proposing.
What's in this document, the full?
No, that's not-
Joe's testimony is to move, to amend this, to go 40 feet north, to allow for-
I know, I didn't, I just didn't hear that in the motion.
The only thing in this thing is, motion approved-
No, because I said, as specified by him at the meeting tonight.
I would change one word in here, mo, motion to approve the installation of the two no parking signs on the west side, and instead of the as proposed, or then say as amended, and that will cover what we discussed.
Yeah, I just, I just want the motion to be more-
Okay, I'll, I'll do it as amended by the Public Works Director at the meeting of, Board of Select meeting of-
Correct.
-May 17, 2017.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, as amended, we'll see how that goes, go back to the Board of Governors, if they-
I would kick it to that.
...feel that's not adequate enough, and we'll look at the saving, we'll have to eyeball it, too. Any comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, that's a unanimous decision at this point. So, thank you, Joe. Thank you for your help on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and speaking to us.
Banners on, signs on lamp posts, if I haven't skipped any, that's next. That has been removed from our agenda this evening. If you had a big monologue on, on that issue, and you prepared something, I'll allow you to speak on it, but apparently it's not, no longer being proposed by the zoning commission-
I'll put my notebook away.
...that asked to strike. I bet you did, right?
Yeah, I bet you did.
They've asked us to strike that from their agenda.
Okay. Moving on then, I'll end, move to, enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel slash contract negotiation issue.
Great.
Second.
So, we will go to my office for-
You have to call and vote first.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So, we'll go into executive session, go to my office, look over the-
Will you tell me you can't do this at the end of the meeting?
So, now that we're back in public, I'll move to come out of executive session with no action taken.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Terrific. So, we generally go over contract negotiations in executive session, we come out, and we generally vote on them. So, we'll take a motion to, for the local 3377 International Association of Firefighters contract-
Okay.
...for, it begins in July.
Move to authorize the First Selectment to enter into collective bargaining agreement between the Town of East Lime and local 3377 of the International Association of Firefighters for the period from July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2018.
Second.
Second. Any comments? I'll give a brief description of the-
And it's an extension for a year, too.
It's a one-year extension-
Extension, which is fine. Extension, which is why I-
Uh, the firefighters will receive a two-point-five percent pay increase, which is pretty standard in the state of Connecticut through arbitration, so we are, uh, we're settling that quickly. This one-year extension also adds to, adds one step into their rate of pay. So what was a one-year probationary step, and then immediately after one year, they would get full pay. Now a new firefighter come in would get that probationary pay, incidentally, this next year, there'll be no increase, no two-point-five percent, but nobody falls in that qualification either. Then, a new firefighter will go into a two to, two, year two to year five, uh, uh, secondary probationary period, uh, uh, so a, a second step. Before, uh, they would go right to the pay that all these career guys were getting, uh, now they'll have to take a, a second step before they reach that level. So it was a nice compromise that, uh, the firefighter, uh, gen, uh, group, um, who are all town citizens, every single one of them, all seven of them, um, who live here, pay taxes here, raise their kids here, and, and fight our fires and save our lives here. They know, and they, they're part of this, this, this town, and, uh, we really appreciate the, uh, very good relationship we have with them. So this is a good contract by the town and good, good tra, contract by them. So I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Commission board resignations. Um, very sorry to see that the resignation of Norm Bender has hit our desk, he's a full voting member of, on the Illinois Wetlands Agency, and he has attended his resignation, and also the resignation of Maggie Prokop, uh, long-serving member in our town. She's an alternate member on the Historic Properties Commission, she has tended her resignation, and I wish them both well and thank them, um, with great gratitude for their service to the town.
I, I, no, Maggie has been active longer than I can possibly remember, same thing with Norm, they both have-
Yeah, no kidding.
Done yeoman's service to this town, and it, I don't know if you've already done it, but a nice thank you from you for their-
Oh, we always do.
I'm sure.
Always do.
Okay, great.
The issue on the temporary tower is one that we're putting in a temporary communications tower in our town while we're, we'll get the, uh, permanent one installed, which was already approved and we're working on, but that's a one-year, bless you, a one-year, uh, process. Well, we're going independent police and we have pockets of, uh, town, uh, the north part of town without radio coverage, that's just for our police, that's for Public Works, that's for burnt people and bur, burning buildings or EMT services, so we want to fill those pockets with a temporary tower that will exist over at the solar farm, more than likely. So, um, I need authorization to go into a zero-cost contract, um, with one of these locations.
Okay, resolve to authorize the First Selectmen to take such actions as may be necessary or desirable to establish and maintain temporary municipal communications facilities at a suitable site pending the completion of the planned permanent communication facility at the Masta Way roadside. Further resolve that the First Selectmen is authorized to execute and deliver such documents as may be necessary, desirable to establish and maintain such temporary communications facilities.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no old business, there's no communications. Information and reports are blank tonight, so ex officio reports, we can go down the line, just fill in some, some areas.
The planning commission canceled the meeting, I attended my first library commission meeting, it was actually a very efficient, very legitimate meeting, uh, was interesting, there was all, not a lot of action was taken, there was some talk about state cutbacks and, and such, and they were, uh, pleased that they got some of their money back reinstated by the Board of, uh, Finance. I was not able to go to the Board of Ed because the meeting was pushed up from seven to six because to its, because there was the, uh, town meeting.
Yeah, somebody covered for you.
And, uh, Kevin covered. Uh, tomorrow, the building committee will host its first meeting in probably five or ten years.
About three.
Three?
Yes.
Okay, that's, since I've been on here, they haven't met, it's been my easiest ex officio duty, but they are meeting tomorrow, now that we have authorized them to take over the school project.
Okay, then I'll speak to Ray tomorrow, Mr. O'Connor, the, um, the Chair, about who can vote until we've changed the rules on that.
Okay.
I'll get on that.
We'll see you tomorrow, it's at seven.
Terrific, I think it's a police commission meeting tomorrow as well, I'll give them a call, I won't be able to be there. Mr., Mr. Siri.
We had a, uh, youth coalition meeting last week too, uh, with the graduation season coming up, they're, uh, working with Ledgely, they're coming up with some, uh, uh, things to put at tables and stickers to put out, warning parents, you know, about hosting alcohol parties and that they could be responsible and make sure they don't, and also to ensure that their children, you know, stay safe during the graduation season and so forth like that. I know a couple of members from Ledgely have been going around town asking restaurants to be able to place these out in a conspicuous place, and all that, they've gone to have said yes. Then Youth Services followed that meeting, they had nine applicants for, uh, three scholarships this year for Jeffrey Borges, who, you know, tragically perished in Salem, uh, back in two thousand twelve. They have, uh, this year, three fifteen-hundred-dollar scholarships they were able to, uh, award to people either going into, uh, education to work with children or into working with animals. So that was it, and then we had Parks and Rec, uh, just, you know, went over the upcoming, uh, uh, season at the beaches. Uh, they discussed the ordinance for the dogs, uh, and also, uh, that the, uh, bandshell opens a week from Friday night. That's the end of my, and that the, uh, meeting I covered for Mark with Board of Ed was just very brief because they were going to the, uh, uh, town meeting as well. That's my report.
Terrific. Terrific. The great Mr. Cunningham.
I actually have nothing tonight, I, I unfortunately missed the, uh, meeting that I was hoping to attend, it was a personal conflict. No report this week.
Well, you have some good news about a daughter graduating, I believe, Mary?
Yep, I have, my daughter Mary's graduating, uh, Monday, and, uh, so we're excited about it.
She'll be a nurse practitioner.
She will, she'll be an APRN and, uh, hopefully.
Stellar. Stellar proud daddy, proud papa. I, uh, been pretty busy around town, I'll give a quick, uh, report and run down, uh, the schedule and things that are happening in town. Uh, Chamber of Commerce hosted a State of the, State of East Lime, um, on Tuesday the ninth, and we had many business owners come out, I think about fifty, sixty people came out to hear about, uh, what was going on in the town and answer, ask questions and get some answers. Um, at, uh, on the tenth, the very next day, we had, uh, the Health and Safety Committee put on, uh, Health and Safety Day. And so all town employees come in and, and, and get brought up to speed on safety issues. Uh, it makes us compliant with our insurance, we get discounts because of that, and, and also, um, you know, OSHA requirements, they have to take certain, uh, safety classes. We also, uh, I was a guest at the Rotary Club, uh, Niantic Rotary, they also had their gala, uh, a couple of weeks ago where they raised money, and of course, they always are giving it back into the community, there's many, many, many examples of that. I went up to the, to the State House and, and spoke at the Town Leaders Day on the eleventh. Cost, the Connecticut, um, small town group got together, we met, uh, with, uh, Themis and, um, and, um, Len, Len Fizzano and, um, Rep. A to Z, as he's known, Joe A to Z, uh, talking about the budget, and that was just after the poor revenue numbers came out from the state. Very, very concerned about that, I'll speak to that at the very end here. We're working on, with Old Lime, we're going to get mandated by the state to accept Old Lime's, um, uh, wastewater and be, uh, convey that to Waterford, which will then bring it over to the New London plant. Uh, we are in discussions with them on how that will work. Uh, again, that will be a court order that we will be forced to do that, but we're doing the preliminary work now. I met with the Oswegochi, uh, Save the River, Save the Hills group, um, no, I'm sorry, the Oswegochi Nature Preserve group, and there is a distinct difference. Uh, we, there was a PTSD presentation at the high school, I'm able to attend the beginning of that as I had another meeting, but, um, uh, very, very well attended, and, uh, kudos to Nicole who put that on, she's a senior at the high school, and, um, uh, very moving, um, presentation. Uh, at Hole in the Wall Beach yesterday was the third graders, uh, around the third graders in town the last couple of years, I saw your daughter.
You saw my daughter.
She gave me a high five, I knew, I knew that, I saw your face. Hole, all the third graders in town go to the Hole in the Wall Beach for the day, they learn about environmental science and the things that are going on down there. It's, um, quite a, quite a place down there, if you actually stop and read the plaques and understand how the stormwater is handled from this, this side of town. I attended the Coast Guard graduation today and represented the, the town there, and, um, tomorrow's Budget Referendum Day. It's easy to forget these days with these automatic budgets, um, uh, referendums, but the eighteenth, so eight o'clock AM to eight o'clock PM at the Town East Lime Community Center, go check out our new parking lot, it's not quite finished yet, but we took out all the big planners in the middle, so you could actually fit your car in the space, and, um, uh, go, go vote. Uh, Town Referendum Day is tomorrow. Um, on Sunday will be a candlelight vigil on the twenty, I'm skipping ahead a week, I'm sorry. Um, the opening of the bandshell is the twenty-sixth, and you mentioned that, and that'll be at, uh, six PM, and what a great addition. That's almost exactly a year after we cut the ribbon on the new boardwalk, uh, with celebration. Now we're celebrating another thing in town, which is the bandshell donated, donated mostly by the, um, Niantic Rotary Club, the Lions, the East Line Public Trust, and a little bit of town money. The twenty-eighth will be a candlelight vigil, the salute to the armed forces in our town, and the Memorial Day Parade is on the twenty-ninth at one o'clock PM. We're still waiting for numbers from the state. Um, the hole is very deep up in Hartford, there is, uh, a, uh, discussion now from the Democrat side to, to actually implement some cuts to the town. It worries me, we have, um, we're standing by, we'll open up the budget discussions again should we get cut, and we'll make cuts to town services, uh, that will affect quality of life here, we'll make cuts to education, and we will have a supplemental tax increase if necessary. We hope not to, we certainly hope not to. But, um, what looked like we would be getting out of that and out of that problem because everything coming from the state was, we're not going to have the teacher pension issue, and we're not going to change the ECS formula, and it's now reverted to, yes, we might. So what was a seven-million-dollar cut by the governor is now a nine-million-dollar cut. It actually got worse. But again, that's all talk, every representative in the room said that's dead on arrival again, but what remains to be seen is an actual budget from the state, we will do our work when they do theirs. I'll, um-
Mark, who, who pays for the sewer connection if, if, uh, we have to hook up the old line? Does that state?
Old, uh, old line.
Old line pays for it?
They'll be reimbursing us, they reimburse us for, there's a buy-in.
If it has to go into our town, they're going to pay to bring it to our hookup.
There'll be a buy-in for the serv, for the system we already have. There'll be, uh, a, a payment for upgrade of a, a pump station that will have to be upgraded to accept their sewer. There'll be depreciation costs involved, there'll be capital costs that if there's ever a capital issue with the town, there will be a buy-in on that as well. Uh, and all these things are being worked out. And we're entitled to fair compensation and not have our ratepayers incur their expenses. And there's no, you know, we've been tack, talking for a year, but we're getting closer and closer. I'll let, uh, we'll go back to public comment, and then I have a few responses for, for Mr. Rando.
Mr. Rando, East Lime? Looking up to Old Lime, how does that affect, uh, the sewer consumption, what does that leave us? What's going to be left for us if we need some? To hook something else up in town?
I'll answer that at the end.
What?
I'll answer that when I, when I can.
Okay, thank you. How many accidents have we had down there? Uh, where we're trying to put them stop signs in, has there been a lot of accidents down there, years? I can't remember, I mean, I've lived here all my life, I don't think we really had big problems down there. Or maybe we do now, I don't know. Okay, I got another one. I forgot to talk about it before. Like I say, my mind don't work as fast as it used to. But my daughter got a water bill last week for her house that burned down. Nobody's li, was living there. My daughter, my granddaughter lives in the back, but she teaches school in Waterford, so she's hardly ever home. And they got a bill for four hundred and sixty or four hundred and thirty bucks. So, I guess she called down here, came down here, I don't know. And they said, well, we read the meter, that's what we got. Well, my grandson says you can't read the meter because it's in the garage and the garage is locked. So, I don't know what happened, but they, oh, how it got read so high. But I guess they deducted it and it's come out to be about a hundred and forty-three dollars. Big difference from four hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty-three dollars. When the house hasn't been there for over, almost a year now, as of the fifteenth of this month. Oh, there's a question I was going to ask, I'm sorry, I flipped my mind. You know, we come to the me, I come to the meeting, we don't have many people come anymore because some of the outspoken ones, I think, something happened, so they don't come anymore. But I'm, I usually try to make everyone I can, as long as I'm feeling good. Now I stood here and spoke my piece, and you guys can't answer me. But the Board of Education's here, and they speak to you, you guys discussed it. Discuss their problem. And this gentleman from the town, and same thing with this problem down at the beach. Now how come you people can discuss these items with these people? And can't discuss them with me? Thank you, and I'll sit here for your response, Mr.-
Terrific. There's nobody else in the audience tonight, so, uh, we'll move to a Selectmen's response, and then we'll adjourn. There are time clocks in the town hall. Every pe, people, uh, that work in the town hall punch in, the department heads don't by rule throughout the town. Town clock, town, town, time clocks have been in the town hall. Police chief already has a contract, it's a four-year contract. It's a, it's a four-year contract, it's a salary position, he's not entitled to overtime. His car and personal u, personal use of his car is part of the job as a chief, because they aren't expected to work twenty-four-seven and be always on call. Uh, this gentleman is no different than any other chief in town, we do not typically give police cars out to other personnel in the department, but when it comes to a chief, it's part of the, um, character, it's part of what the job entails and requirements of the job. That's very typical, okay, I can't, listen, I gave you a shot here.
What?
I gave you a shot, I can't go back and forth with you right now, okay? We can have a discussion anytime, my door is always open, and I'll, and I'll meet with you after the meeting tonight.
Uh, I don't like that.
Okay.
I'd rather meet in public discussion.
Um, my jo, my life's in public, sir. May fifteenth, your house burnt down last year, there was a permit issue, I think there was an illegal apartment issue up there. Um, I think there was an engineering issue, I know we had a meeting that you didn't show up for. I specifically cut it a time away to have a meeting at this desk, I sat at three o'clock in the afternoon one day, and I didn't have anyone show up. Uh, and I think there was another meeting that was canceled with a phone call. I know I tried to work with you and, and advocate for you, uh, I wasn't given the opportunity to, but I know there were several issues on that property, um, that I think delayed the project, sir. Uh, private detective, bring it on, there's no conspiracy, a welcomeum, and that person can come into my office and spend three days with me if you'd like, I'll clear my calendar. Looking forward to it. And the, all your issues about the pool, the tennis court, the roof on the old middle school, or the old lily bee, the boardwalk, ancient history, sir, this commission hasn't, hasn't caused any of those issues, if anything, I'm trying to fix problems. Uh, so the pool, roof, probably a big problem, we'll put a humidifier in there to fix the problem. It's the best I can do, when, it's the best I can do. The ball field, the baseball field is a shame that it's, it is where it is, and that left field, you, 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 you go down in a ditch, because my kid played left field, and he's down in a ditch there, and we can never seem to fix that field. Tennis court's the same thing, no, they don't belong there, that's what they are, nobody here voted for that. Sewer consumption will be on, on, uh, will be New London sewer consumption, Old Lime has to make a contract- make a contract with New London to take their consumption, ours will not be affected. We have a hundred percent of our consumption and will not be affected by any deal that Old Line makes with New London and it's forced by New London, by the state to take, we're out of that. All we're going to do is get money, proper money, we're not going to rip off Old Line and we're most certainly going to protect the ratepayers in East Lime, the sewer people. And there have been some issues with the water bills, I've seen them, I've gotten the phone calls, I personally walked people down to the water department and filled out a form, they have a very good system now to investigate any erroneous bills and we're getting to the bottom of that. I don't know what's going on out there, but we're trying to get it fixed. I think I answered most of the questions, we can always, like I say, answer more anytime you wish. Are there any other selectmen's responses?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or else.